To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it just stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. If you would please remain standing and I'll have Jim Lute-Johann from the Chamber of Commerce come forward, please.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. A few of you have probably heard the sad news that this week we lost a very valued member of our staff, Sandra Ferns, who went by Sandy to all of us and worked in our visitor's center for the last several years and who is mother to another member of our staff, Michelle Warner, and grandmother to two young boys here in the community. And it was a very sudden and shocking loss. And if you would allow me to invite you, please to join in a moment of silence in honor of Sandy. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Denise, the roll call, please.
Councilmember Cassidy?
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Here.
Councilmember Sampson?
Here.
Mayor Proton Molson?
Here.
And Mayor Marshall?
Here. Announcements? Written communications?
I have none.
Okay. City manager report?
I don't really have a report. I just wanted to acknowledge and thank the chamber and our one-man recreation department, David Hart and Jennifer Monroe, for their tireless efforts for all the -- and Amelia, of course. It was a very successful Fourth of July.
Yes, yes, thank you. City attorney report?
Nothing tonight.
Okay. Councilmember reports? Who would like to start?
I'll just thank the staff as well. Really much appreciated. I know you guys, the guys on the streets and in the office here did a great job for the Fourth of July, preparing down -- I'm sorry. I just thank you all very much for your hard work and attention to detail, moving in and out the horses and everything that all the different groups needed throughout the weekend. It was a great job. And you guys can pass the word on, Dennis, to your crew. They did a great job. And we just keep up the hard work and I really appreciate it. Same with the emergency services. I think the sheriffs did a great job. You know, we had no big incidences as far as I know. And that was the main thing that I was concerned about was big things. And it was order and peace and it was a great event. So Harvard Department, excellent job, no complaints. Fire Department, emergency services, Sheriff's Department, LA County Life Guards, LA County Sheriff's, Fire Department, I mean. My hat's off to y'all and thank you for taking care of our community like you do.
Yes. And thank you for singing the Sarge Bangle banner. I'm just sorry that we missed it.
Yeah, you're welcome. My pleasure. I'm always honored.
Thank you.
Now, I just wanted to know if we got any follow-up on the -- in our last meeting, we talked about the cutouts up there by Beacon Street and Metropole Streets, Denise, for the ADA access. We talked about wheelchair ramps up there. Did we ever get anything back from that?
Well, we had a discussion at the staff meeting the next day regarding if we had crosswalks up there at that top of the hill, that that wouldn't be a place to do it because people would be stopping, not at a very good spot. And we were worried about pedestrians actually crossing there more by with crosswalks. And we hadn't really come up with a solution yet, Richard.
Okay, all right. But I'd like to --
We did discuss it the very next day.
Yeah, I'd like to maybe get up and take a real good look at it. I know there was up there the other day, especially with the museum coming into play now, there's going to be probably more and more people going up that way. And if we have better wheelchair ADA access for the sidewalks, it'd be nice, but whatever it may take.
And you were talking also about stop signs. Didn't you mention stop signs or something there?
No, I was just talking about the church there, no? I was just talking about the church.
Just the --
Just the cutouts and the sidewalks.
Okay.
You can get back to me.
We might have misunderstood. We were pulling the whole thread of crosswalks and stop signs and --
Which is okay. That's probably all part of it also. Okay, thank you.
I have several, actually. I'm happy to go. I'll echo the sentiments that I spent -- I've had a wonderful past two weeks on the island with all the activities. A great big thank you and kudos to the city staff and all the work that has gone into the holiday weekend, the Clydesdales visit and getting the museum to an opening point, all while continuing to do daily work responsibilities. The staff has just been exceptional. All the activities put on by the museum, the city, Anheuser-Busch and Catalina Beverage Staff Members and Levente Alcubay and all of the Fourth of July activities, the yacht club, the dinghy parade, just was simply outstanding. The chamber's participation and everything, it's just been a wonderful packed two weeks full of events, but it's really what this community is about. Last council meeting, I raised the question regarding the responsibilities of the Audit Committee and its appointees from the city council. And Finance Director Bob and I have talked over this. And we'll have an item for discussion or an item on the consent calendar for the July 19th council meeting. And we all received some of that update in our emails, so we'll be talking more about that at the July 19th council meeting. So Bob, thank you very much for your efforts on that and the quick response. Tomorrow I'll be attending the Gateway Cities Council of Government Board Meeting and the Transportation Meeting. And want to -- three items that are maybe possibly more discussion, but want to start Mayor, you had brought up two meetings ago, a great point about adding some additional responsibilities onto the Planning Commission or some maybe things that they could help with. And I would love to see them start with direction from the council on permits, auto, you know, auto-permits, helping us maybe come up with some solutions or whatnot. So it doesn't have to be right at this moment, but if we could give them a task, they've got a couple of slow months, as I understand it, coming up. And maybe we can reach out and talk to a planning director as well and see how best we can utilize the skills of the Planning Commission.
Yeah.
The next one is much bigger. I believe that the city should do something of an educational forum where we learn all things possible about medical marijuana, the business of marijuana and what has worked and what hasn't in other states and also in Canada. Again, Mayor, you have made some mention to receiving a bunch of information. It's nearing time for us to disseminate information and put together some sort of forum. The financial, legal, policing, et cetera, all of this encompassing and what the impacts are and could be for our community either way. This should be spearheaded by the city, not by an individual or interested party on either side of this. Needs to be very unbiased and driven by the city. So my request would be that the city council agree to give direction to staff to pull this together for an October meeting date to be determined.
Can I just add to that a little bit?
Yeah, absolutely.
One of the -- I think it needs to go a little quicker than that because there has been some discussion if we need an additional initiative or a referendum on the city's part, there's probably a timeline for that and you can speak to that. But if we wanted to also do something ourselves, we need to do that as a -- figure that out as a body also. So I don't know what timing for something like that is.
So the timing for the city council to place something on the agenda, whether it's initiative or referendum or advisory, is basically the second week in August? So you'd have to decide pretty quickly, either the next meeting or the first meeting in August. Obviously, the earlier the better.
So if the city created something, we don't have to have signatures, number one. Is that what I understand?
Yeah, the council can place something on the ballot.
And it doesn't need to be noticed or anything? So I mean, other than -- so the quicker we can learn and then if there's something we want to create, then we should have adequate time for it to be created, I guess. So I don't know if October's a little late when the election is, November?
Second meeting in August.
And I will not be here on the second meeting of August.
Yeah, I'm thinking --
Well, I don't know that this would -- this forum, I would imagine, would be several hours and not something that we could quickly do at a council meeting. That's why I'm saying it. Meeting time to be determined. But I think there's so much information out there on both sides of the story that I just, you know, we're reading, each of us are reading different things. And I think it's beneficial to just bring in some experts, ask some people to come and share, pull in some data from other, what's worked, what hasn't, what are the financial impacts, you know, what, just some information.
Task force? Are you talking about a task force or a committee or something?
No.
Or just with us?
Just to have, I mean, I would imagine it would take significant city time, resources to find the people to bring them, you know, that can come and talk and share and --
Yeah, I've got a name or two.
Okay.
So, yes, and that willing to come and, yes.
And I personally have no concern when the date is. If we could do it next week, that'd be great too, but I just want --
So how do we get a fair --
The council needs to decide to direct staff to pull it together.
Oh, so we can get a fair and balanced kind of group of people?
Fair and balanced, unbiased.
On both sides, yeah. Because it would hard to be -- it would hard to be -- be hard to find some, an unbiased kind of point of view, but I'm sure they're out there. Because, I mean, if we got people participating within the community that are selected or not, everybody's got a dog in the hunt on this. A lot of people do, whether it be financial or somebody just that just needs the medicine or somebody that's just trying to help the public, somebody that's maybe trying to help the industry or not, or just chemistry, the chemistry of it. I mean, this is what you're talking about, right? A little bit of everything so we can get --
Little bit of everything, yeah.
Input on exactly what the burden that the city would bear from it.
And then we create the decision.
Exactly.
I mean, yeah, we weigh it, we weigh it.
Okay, right.
Basically. And I don't, I think all of us, like she is saying, and I've been saying, we don't know.
We don't know.
We don't know a lot ourselves, I don't think. There's so much out there.
Well, yeah, there's a lot of outcomes, deleterious effects. I know I use that word a lot, but you don't know what will happen sometimes when you make a certain decision. There's other things that can happen that follow suit to what your decision is. So, yeah, I agree that we need to hash that out a little bit.
Great. Okay, and then my, the last item is actually a question for Scott Campbell. For the November election on the ballot, we were already adding an item on the ballot, could we also incorporate whether we have an agreement or not to, if we have an agreement to do it, an item on the ballot that asks the community at large whether or not they would like the city to move forward on building a pool in a community center? Letting the public at large decide, getting a better feel from the whole public? Because even though we have no water to build a pool at this time, the securing of funds to even move forward, land for the project, development of the project and execution is going to be a multi-year process. So if it's something that we, I mean, is that, that's still this August deadline?
So the answer to that is yes and no. You have a deadline of the August date, and I'm trying to figure it out. I think it's the, I think it's the 12th, but it's mid-August, to place an advisory initiative or an advisory question on the ballot. You can do that. The one thing that may be a wrinkle is there's a special section in the election code that allows the county of Los Angeles to determine if the ballot is cluttered, if there are too many items on the ballot, then advisory opinions go last. In other words, they can decide if the ballot's too crowded, we're not going to have it, and it'll go then at the next regular election. And because this ballot, there's a number of initiatives, it's presidential, we don't know what the county would say. We could always talk to the county and, you know, get their inclination, but you can do it, the county just has to agree. And then obviously, there'd have to be three votes, agreement on the language of the advisory thing. And I know you've done advisory initiatives back in the 70s.
Well, the thought would be, you know, the last big project that we had was the Vaughns Project. And, you know, there was just individuals trying to pull together to get their words out there, whether they wanted it or didn't want it. And it just seems like it would be, you know, something to put on. Maybe members of the community want a community center, maybe they just want a pool, maybe they want both, maybe they don't want anything, you know, I just, it's hard to get an opinion from that number of people.
I'd just like to interject. The, I don't think we want to politicize the pool. However, when we get the new community serves and rector, his first order of business is the needs assessment. And I would like to think that needs assessment would be very thorough, just as the residential one that we're doing. And, you know, we're asking for, so maybe, maybe that would be a nice way to get the information as well and we're getting it from the locals. And I don't know, is it important for the absentee owners to buy in on this in election? And I don't know, or is it more of a residential concern that, you know? So I don't know. I don't know.
It's a question similar to that. Councilmember Cassidy went to the voters in the 1980s at one point when we had the redevelopment money, whether the, we wanted to build a community center, if we wanted to build a pool, if we wanted city resources to go towards maintaining and funding the pool to keeping it going. We had like 10 to 12 measures.
Oh, wow.
Over a period of a couple of years. So I could pull those out and give you that information if you wanted to proceed forward that way.
I think the date is August 12.
Okay.
So you have two council meetings.
Okay. I'd be happy to start with that data, Denise, and then certainly with, when Dan arrives and community.
What you can do.
Yeah, that'd be great. Okay, that's all I've got.
Yes, yes.
Absolutely amazing. Just the number of people that participated in the parade, the number of people that watched the parade, you know, five and six people deep. I mean, when we were on the fire engine, when we were at Wrigley Plaza, I looked over my shoulder and saw the horses coming around the casino point. That's how long that sucker was. And then this morning, I had to go over town early, so I was walking downtown. It was amazing how clean downtown was. It was still, there were still remnants, but after all those people were there. I was just, I think the public work crew did a heck of a job and so did everybody else. I guess CNR gave us some trash cans, some throwaway trash cans for, we could put along crescent, because there were a lot of extra trash cans out there, which was appreciated, I believe. It was a good thing.
Helps out.
Yeah. Last week, I was at the League of California City's Mayors and Council Members Conference, and this is the information I'm going to pass out to the council. One of the important things that came up, which I was not aware of, which I should have been, is other post-employment benefits, which is like our retirees' healthcare that we have to pay for. And we need to kind of set up our little trust fund so we can alleviate that burden. Otherwise, it's going to cost us even more money. And one other thing that's kind of confused me, or not confused me, but we've got a lot of taxi zones in town, and unfortunately, the taxis do a lot of double parking. Now, either they've got to use the taxi zones or double park, but I don't think they do both. And so I think we should talk to, we should have staff talk to taxi people and find out what do they want? Are they going to have them park in the taxi zones and use the taxi zones or are they going to double park? And I think we should figure out what's happening there, because it's just, it's a waste of parking if they're just going to keep double parking. That's all I have.
We'll send a letter.
Thank you.
And speaking of parking, it just made me think of something. Where John Mottal has his business, where the old fire department was and all of that, there's curb cuts there. And people automatically, I think, just use them anyway. I don't, and I didn't realize that. I've always, you know, okay, I can't park there. It's a curb cut even though there's no driveway. Can we just leave them like that or at some point should we fill them in? It probably is expensive to fill them in, but does people, I guess they don't get ticketed for that, they just?
There's no paint on it.
Okay, so you don't ticket somebody in a curb cut there, Captain Federal?
It's obsolete.
It's not a driveway.
Okay, so people just know to park there?
It used to be a driveway with the fire trucks back in.
Yeah, well, I'm glad people know to park there. Okay. So I don't have to worry about that. Okay, and you know that I had the best job in the whole wide world last week because I got to ride in the Budweiser cart, which is a thrill of a lifetime. So I want to thank you. And of course, after the, after, everybody kind of dispersed afterwards, but I found Joe. And so we had a city flag and we had embroidered on it July 4, 2016. Because they really weren't able to stop during the parade route and get down and receive anything, that wouldn't have worked. So Don Kenaby up there all by himself. So when they went to de-harness, we got there, we presented the city flag with the proclamations to both Levente Alcubay and to Anheuser-Busch and thanked them for everything. And there was still enough of a crowd there, they're very well appreciated. So anyway, I can't wait to 2017 and see what we do. Anyway, it was incredible. And so I just ditto what everybody said. And the cleanup crew was right there with doing confetti, like Joe said, I mean, or you said, it was, it was awesome. And the proclamations that were written, oh, and the non-agenarians, oh my God. They were very honored and very excited to be in the parade. And they all took their little, those signs that they had for each of them were great. And so they'll be displaying them on their golf carts. It was A1, A1. Thank you.
One more thing.
Yes.
I just got an email from our supervisor, Don Kenaby, who was riding on the Budweiser float cart, or whatever it's called. "Oli, thanks again for the time of my life, experience yesterday. On a scale of 10, it was a 12. Thanks, Don."
Tell him, yeah, you're welcome. Okay. So presentations. Do we have a presentation?
We do.
And Adeline is, what is she?
She's here for announcements, I believe.
Oral communication present, whatever you want to call it. How's that?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Nice to see you again.
You too.
I believe in celebrating birthday week. On my mind, it's still America's birthday.
Yeah, great.
So today, I'd like to talk about, I'd like to share some information about programs we have in Edison for income-qualified households. We have --
Here comes Jordan.
Sorry. So we have three categories of assistance programs for households that are income-qualified. First, there's an ongoing bill support program. We have a one-time assistance program and we do have free upgrades as well. So our CARE and FARA program is a rate program that will provide monthly discount on electric rates for low-income household. So CARE stands for the California Alternative Rates for Energy and FARA is the Family Electric Rate Assistance. So CARE will provide about 30% discount, monthly discount on the bills for those households that are qualified. And then FARA provides about a 12% discount on their monthly electric bills for households of three or more. So in order to qualify for CARE, you want, either you or someone in your household does need to participate in one of the public assistance programs. And on the FARA, you can, and then also if you do meet some income-qualified guidelines, you can qualify for either CARE or FARA. So the residents who qualify can, you can either apply online at se.com/careandfera. You can also call and apply over the phone. That is at 800-798-5723. And then I did bring with me some rate discount application forms where individuals can fill out and send it in. So if there's any questions, folks can call 800-447-6620. And there is, there will be Spanish speakers as well too, to provide information or answer questions. The next program we have is the Energy Assistant Fund. And again, these are all for income-qualified households. So in partnership with the United Way, Edison has actually provided one-time bill payments of up to $100. And we've done this since 1982 and nearly a quarter of a million qualified households have received this one-time $100 bill or $100 assistance. Last year alone, 15,000 customers qualified under this program. So in the city of Avalon, you can actually go to the Recreation Department and apply for this assistance program as well too. And I did contact Denise to make sure that that was accurate, and she confirmed that it is. The last program, oh, and then under the Energy Assistant Fund, if you're fortunate that, you can also make tax-deductible contributions towards this fund. A lot of Edison employees actually do do that. They will provide contributions. You can do this through your bill, you can enroll in the Roundup Program. So it'll automatically round up your bill, or you can do it on a one-time basis. You can contribute through the credit card, through the United Way. You can text. That's always something that the younger generation likes to do. So you can donate $5 through your cellphone by texting LIGHT to 20222 and $5 will be automatically added to your cellphone bill and then donated to this Energy Assistant Fund. And then lastly, you can always send a check. The last program I want to touch upon is the Energy Savings Assistant Program. And for income-qualified customers, we'll actually provide free appliances and installation of energy-efficient refrigerators and air conditioners and even help with like home energy, home efficiency solutions like weatherization. So again, you know, this is all income-qualified. And for more information about this, you can call 800-736-4777, Monday through Friday, 8 to 6. So I just wanted to make sure that the residents here in Avalon are familiar with the programs that we do have. Thank you.
I have a question, Adeline.
Sure.
Adeline, there was a time, and maybe, we don't do these anymore, so that's why you don't mention them. So if you pulled your grass up and you, and you put in drought-resistant plants and things like that, or you put in solar or whatever, are there any of those programs around anymore?
I don't know about the turf. No, I focus primarily on the income-qualified type programs.
Sure.
I can do more research on the others to see what we have in regards to solar and the turf removal.
Okay, yeah.
And I will get back to you on that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Thank you again.
Thank you very much. It's nice to see you. Happy Fourth of July. Happy birthday, United States of America, as that one young boy was saying on the float yesterday.
Yeah, great.
Oh. Ow.
It's okay, it's a dell. I just have two brief announcements on behalf of the Chamber and Visitors Bureau. One is that we will be holding our annual meeting and board installation on the evening of July 21 at 6:00 PM. And we've just cemented our location, that will be at the brand-new museum here on Metropole. And you do not have to be a member to attend. And also a reminder to anyone watching at home, since there's such a large crowd of us here tonight, that it is not too late to support the fireworks and Fourth of July festivities, which we've all been gloating over, but those are very expensive endeavors. And there's a button on the city's website where you can donate or you can mail a check to us. Either way, we're happy to continue to receive those funds in support of that. Thank you.
Great. Oh, and you opened up your new office.
Yes, we're going to have an official opening down the road when we get just a few more items installed, but we have opened on the pier, so come on down and see us.
Looks great. Looks great.
David Hart, Recreation. The theme from sea to shining sea, maritime history of Catalina Island sparked a burst of creativity from the float builders, making this Fourth of July the best weekend ever. From the Monks to the Clydesdales to the USC marching band to over 75 floats in this year's parade, it was truly an exceptional weekend. To make this happen and to make this great tradition event happen, it takes many people. And we'd like to thank those people. First and foremost, I would like to thank our Public Works Director, Dennis Jaig, along with Jeffrey Hernandez, and the entire public work staff for the setup and breakdown of the entire event, helping out with creating a flat, clean environment for the Clydesdales while still taking care of sewer issues and broken pipes. Their hands were full, but they carried the weekend. Special shout-out to Jennifer Monroe for all the logistics of bringing the USC band, organizing the details for the Clydesdales, and making sure the parade went in an orderly fashion. None of the organization happens without her. Thanks to all our volunteers, Lisa Lovell, Kristi Allegria, Kinsley Allegria, Yasmin Daza, Angel Ramirez, Jenny Marquez, who helped judge the floats, line up the floats, and ran to get me information about each float. Also Portia Denning for showing up, being willing to help when asked. Art Jimenez and Miguel Benia for controlling traffic and helping wherever needed. Jordan Moreau and Luis Rubio for the audio technical aspects of the event, along with DJ Dinmar Verwallow for the fun-spirited music during the day and the patriotic music during the fireworks. We'd like to thank the city manager Denise Raddie for empowering us with whatever we needed to make this great event happen. We'd like to thank the council members and the mayor for -- We'd like to thank the council members and the mayor for making connections and doing whatever was necessary to make this event smoother, whether it be Council Member Cindy McGugan helping me move golf carts, making phone calls to proper authorities, or to Council Member Sampson singing the National Anthem. All of you made it easy for staff to get their work done. We'd love, we'd love to thank the Honorable District Supervisor, Don Kanabi, for choosing us to spend his Fourth of July weekend every year. He will be missed when he leaves the office this year. We would like to thank CRNR and Eddie Vega for putting in extra time to make sure Avalon stays clean. Jim Rutuhon and the entire Chamber of Commerce staff for their promotion and work on the event. Ray Jones of Long Beach Shot Sales for bringing the replica of the Miss Catalina boat for the Grand Marshal Doug Bombarde and his wife, Audrey, to ride in. We'd like to thank Steve Montague for organizing the T-6 WW, the World War II planes for the flyover. The Catalina Yacht Club for the dinghy parade and the generous donation towards the USC band. We'd like to thank the VFW Island Outpost 4682 for carrying the colors of our country and serving to keep us safe, the reason we celebrate. We'd like to thank Pyros Spectacular and Avalon Freight Service for the fireworks show, and also Avalon Freight Service for the delivery of the USC truck as well as the speedboat. We'd like to thank Captain Federall, Chief Krug, and Harbor Master Brian Bray, and their entire staff for keeping us safe all weekend. We'd like to thank SCI Company for the use of the land for the Clydesdales and working with us on housing the USC band and putting a great event up at the casino. We'd like to thank the Catalina Island Museum for bringing culture and a new experience to the island with the Dre Pong Luusling monks from Tibet. We'd like to thank Jake Vogel and Jessica Belch and the entire USC marching band, song leaders, flag girls, and cheerleaders for keeping the tradition alive and giving us a great performance. We'd love to thank Levend Alcabe and Catalina Beverage and Budweiser for bringing the Clydesdales and making this a truly memorable Fourth of July. Thank all that participated in the parade and all the visitors who have come to call us home to celebrate with us every year. We'd like to thank all those who donated to offset the costs of this wonderful weekend. It is truly appreciated. We cannot do it without the support of the community and our extended island families all over. Last but not least, we would like to thank our year-round residents, the islanders, for helping all those who visit feel like Catalina Island is home and family. Truly one of the best Fourth of Julies I have seen and helped together. I have been blessed to have been a part of everyone who was involved in making this a true family-community event, and I say thank you. Thank you.
And I know you've covered it very well, but one, one person I want to mention, I want to thank Mark Milan and Mindy Milan for providing transportation for our non-agenarians. It's a lot of fun. Thank you. Okay. No more presentations? Let's go to oral communications. This is an opportunity for members of the community to speak on an item which is not on the agenda. No action will be taken, and please limit yourself to three minutes.
Locking.
Seeing none. Okay. Consent calendar.
We have four items on the consent calendar this evening. The first one is actions from four different meetings. The second one is the City Manager's Employment Agreement with David Jenkins. The third one is four resolutions that will go to LA County for our sewer, salt, saltwater standby, grease, and trash. And the fourth one is Law Enforcement Services Agreement with LA County. And we ask you to approve all laws.
Okay. Counsel, it's your pleasure. Does anybody from the audience have a question on any of these items as well?
I'll make a motion to approve Consent Calendar Items 1 through 4.
Second.
Moving second. Further comments? Call for the vote.
All ayes.
General business.
First item on general business is miscellaneous fee schedule. This is a public hearing.
I would like to open the public hearing. Yes.
Good afternoon, Mark Milan, 131 Metropole. This is an important item. I think what happens is charges to get put on a ledger, a sheet of accounts, and every year, maybe something new is added, like the grease traps or something like that, a new fee for a new service that's required. But every year, these services seem to be mounting up and ratchet up, and you can say, well, this is what Buena Park charges, or this is what Corona Del Mar charges. You could say, well, this is what we charged last year, but we just need another 2% or 3% more than that. The information on the line items is, takes a serious amount of time to go through. It's nothing that you've analyzed, I'm quite sure yet here tonight. I can tell you that when you start approaching $1,000 a month, or $1,000, excuse me, for a simple appeal of something from the Planning Commission, or a decision from this chamber, excuse me, from City Council, that the people that are working here, we're not talking about business owners that are going to write it off, and we're not talking about the really rich guy that doesn't care about $1,000, $1,000 there. I'm telling you that the majority of the people who live on the island, you can do your own statistical research, you're sitting really in a $20,000 to $40,000 income. We're not dealing with a lot of rich people on the majority. And by having example, that one fee on appeal be $1,000, you're taking between 2% and 5% of a family's gross income because they want to talk about the permit, to question the permit that their next-door neighbor's house is going to turn into a summertime party house with a vacation rental permit or something. It's just, these fees have not been analyzed, and I think they're set up on some basis that we're like an overtown city, but we're not. We have a 75- or 90-day winter and some weekends, but a lot of people who work three jobs during the summer work a half a job during the winter. So they can't participate in government because the fees to participate are too high. They're not related to the cost. Now, a golf cart sticker, I don't care if it's $27 or $32, and there's a cost of the sticker, and Lord knows, by the time Dudley does 1,600 golf carts, it's worth every penny that that has charged. But now we're talking about a fee that is $20 or $30. We're not talking about fees that are $1,000. Okay? There are some people who couldn't put another closet in their house because they can't afford the building fees that are so expensive. But I want to come back to the administrative fees, and that's where I would like to draw your attention. I say that until you really look at them and analyze them, you shouldn't be voting on them. When somebody files an appeal, for example, about a planning commission, Denise has to write a letter. She puts it on a calendar, she makes sure it works, and she writes a letter to somebody. Now, she does a beautiful letter, and it's really professional, and it's worth, I'm sure, 100 bucks or 200 bucks, something like that. But when it costs $1,000 to write the letter, then what you're doing is you're telling all the citizens in Avalon, you don't get to participate in government because you're not rich. And I just think that it's inappropriate, and I would ask that the fee schedules be reviewed, and there even be an opportunity for the public to comment on line items instead of just coming with a booklet of things and saying, this is what we charged last year, this is what we're going to charge next year. And some of the things shouldn't have been charged that much last year. And therefore, to include more people in the democratic process, you've got to make it so they can afford to do it. And if you're making 40 grand a year, there's no way you're going to take $1,000 out of your family's budget to talk about the permit that's being issued next door. You just can't afford to do it. And so I ask that you analyze these discretionary expenses that exceed the cost of providing the service. The city is not making its money on these services. So why not let the services be at a price that people can afford? Thank you for your time tonight.
Appreciate your comment. Do we want to respond to that, or is that something, we just take the comment, or do we respond? I mean, some of the things we do, we analyze the costs behind it. So I don't know if, is this okay for me to ask? Is this something that our finance director can speak to, or? Do me a hand here. I'm not sure which way to go.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. I agree that we should continually look at our fees and make sure that they're reasonable. The list is quite extensive, so it would take quite an amount of time to do that. And I was telling some others today that we would be planning to do that sometime within the next year, to at least start analyzing some of the larger fees. So I think that's a good suggestion for us to have someone look at what the charge is, and then what the actual cost to the city is.
And no?
But, but as far as the fees before you today, most of the fees are not being changed at all from, we're not proposing to change most of the fees.
And again, in the past, when the fees were enacted, many, many years ago, you do a study of the actual cost, and that's how you set the fee, and then they've been increased pursuant to the CPI. I know, for instance, in the instance of appeals to the Planning Commission or to the council, those are typically based on the fact that if you have to, you have to prepare the notice, you have to prepare postage for everyone in the area, you have to run the computer programs to make certain that everyone's given notice, and then there's the staff time, which includes staff time and attorney time for preparing for the item. So it is based on, there's a report, or in the past, there's been a report, now it's been adjusted, that says what those fees are based upon, you know, reasonable cost. But in council, you can, you can approve it, and then if there's particular fees you want to have a closer look at, we can look at that and see if the costs are still in line with what the actual cost is.
In particular, this item that Mr. Milan had mentioned, I understand completely that if there is something going on next door to you, and you want to have a say-so in the matter, and you don't quite agree completely, and it costs you $1,000, is there any way for a person who wants to come back and appeal a decision to get some kind of a grant or a funding, or some kind of help financially if they want to appeal it? I mean, how can that money be dispersed, I mean, or not come directly out of somebody's pocket that can't afford it, when, you know, they just want to ask a question about a million-dollar development that's going on next door, or, you know, and they're just a regular Joe?
I, I don't know if there's anything specific in the, but I could look at that, but the past practice has been that when someone files an appeal, oftentimes, there'll be a decision to waive the fee or reduce the fee because of inability to pay. That's what the Planning Commission, or I remember a couple instances, the council has done that. So it's been done in the past. I can't point to any things specifics, but I can remember it specifically being done, you know, several times that I've been here.
But I absolutely see what Mr. Milan's point is, and maybe we can take a closer look at certain items. That one in particular, I think it's an amazing amount of money just to appeal a decision. But then again, I understand your explanation, which is there's a lot of administrative costs that are linked into that, and computer programming, and things like that, and networking. So, but I do definitely think we ought to look at it and see if just the regular person that is somebody who lives here and maybe owns property or doesn't, wants to appeal something, how they can have a voice in the community without feeling like they have a boot on their neck, or being squashed.
And I have a question. I don't know if you just threw out that $1,000 figure, just that, I'm trying to look through here, and of course, I didn't memorize the things, but I don't see an appeal that's about $8,000. Am I, is, did I just miss it in looking? I apologize.
I found one that was around $760 for an appeal to the commission, Planning Commission.
Okay, okay. That's about the highest there is.
I didn't review it for that.
Yeah, I couldn't, I couldn't see, and I saw administrative appeal of 200 and something, and that kind of thing, but...
But that fee has not been proposed to change over last year.
Okay.
Seven hundred... Sorry, I'm showing appeal to the Planning Commission at $728.
Okay.
Okay, that's still a lot of money. But if we can somehow, if somebody really does have a good point that we see, and they want to appeal, and they don't have the finances to do it, I'm just wondering if we have some kind of a program that we can help them have their voice heard.
I think we should look in that, but also, this is an appeal. This has already been heard by the Planning Commission in a public meeting, where it doesn't cost anything to put your point out there. So I mean, it's been heard by the seven-member Planning Commission. The argument that was presented to them didn't bear weight with them. I'm not sure whatever the reason was. And I think, you know, if they want to continue to pursue it, there's, if they are not able to afford, I think we should find an avenue for that. But I think, don't, let's not forget, it is an appeal. And there, you know, every property owner gets a letter within 500 feet of the, you know, place where the application was filed, noticing of the upcoming meetings. And so there is some cost associated with that. I get those letters all the time.
And they, and with notice, they can attend the meeting and speak up at that time before, and hopefully the Planning Commission would listen, and then they maybe wouldn't have to go through the appeal to us.
We've seen the importance of appeals, though, in the last couple of years, so...
Well, and, and...
There's been a few.
And just like with the, yeah, with Edison, though, it's just like with Edison.
Edison, Bond.
Vacation rental.
Yeah. No, no, I meant...
Appeal, those appeals on that.
Vacation rental appeals, yeah, we get a lot of those.
Well, and I was, and I was talking about Edison, I meant the fact that they have a program in place where it's a certain percent of your, you know, they have low-income qualifications. I mean, there's some guidelines that, that are established when they reduce rates, so we could maybe adopt something like that, or just people plead their case.
I think it would be a good idea if we just looked into that. That particular item, I think, kind of, I didn't really understand the whole, the whole of, of why we were charging so much for that appeal. So I'm beginning to understand it a little better, but I think Mr. Milan has a good point. Once again, I have to raise that maybe we can get some assistance for people if they have an important enough point that they want to make, or they feel strongly enough about it. Maybe we can try to help people out with that.
Okay. I had a, Dave Hart in Recreation. I'm so sorry, I had two more questions I had forgotten to ask you earlier. One was the, the dance classes are missing from the Recreation, so hopefully we'll get that added in there in the...
I'll make sure that gets it.
And then what was the, what is the open swim?
Well, one, well, one of the things with the dance class, too, the dance class is a private organization. It's actually not an organization that we, we develop. They actually, as part of, we're in partnership with them, so they set, they set the fee for it.
Oh, okay.
Because they're a private organization. That's why it's not part of the fee.
So it shouldn't be part of the fee schedule?
Yes.
Okay. And then, so what is the open swim?
Open swim is open, open ocean swim classes because we do not have a pool.
So $2 per visit? Does that mean that we provide a lifeguard, or we provide...
Well, we do, like, like last year, we had, like, years before, we, I didn't feel comfortable what they did a couple of years ago where we had people who were rec leaders teach that class who weren't open ocean, weren't water safety certified. And last year, we did have two people who were water safety certified to teach those courses. And so we taught those courses, and this, this year, we, we had nobody who applied for that position. We put out for that position. So currently, right now, we don't have the swim classes because we don't have anyone who's certified to teach a swim class right now. The, the pricing of it was actually $56, I believe, for eight lessons. So I don't know where the $2...
I don't know. It's on the fee schedule. It says $2 per visit. It just seemed confusing.
I'll take a...
I think Jordan's going to help you out.
It, it used to be when we have the above-ground pool, and we would open up the pool for people to come and have open swim day.
Got it.
So the pool was only for swim lessons, and then when we wanted to open it up to the general public and let people swim around, we had an open swim. Unfortunately, we don't have an above-ground pool or an in-ground pool. So it's currently not really applicable, but it's a placeholder in case, and as a reminder that if we get a pool, we can have that option.
Okay.
Great.
Okay. And then, and then, thank you, David. I appreciate, sorry, I'd forgotten those when I talked to you earlier. So then the, the last request would just be with the final, when the final fee schedule comes out, our finance director and I talked about adding in all the units where need be, where it's per hour and all that. So the final copy would, could have all that.
Additional comments? I'll close the public hearing. It's now closed. Okay, counsel?
I'll, how many resolutions we have?
And adopt the resolution.
Do we need to move each resolution or can we move them in bulk?
In bulk, I think the way she wrote them.
Okay, then I will. Find where I am. I got it.
This item has only one resolution. There's only one.
You're right.
Yes.
Further down. Move to adopt the resolution for the proposed fiscal year 16, 17 miscellaneous fee schedule.
My second. Comments? Call for the vote.
All eyes?
Item number six.
Six will involve a request for a letter to the PUC. Commit council members Cassidy and Hernandez will be recusing themselves on this matter due to potential conflict of interest, relationships with the island company, either in forms of employment or money received. So, this item is on the agenda at the request of council member Sampson to request a letter to the PUC to expedite their determination of the reconsideration request of Curtin Maritime. And so I put this on the agenda. The only additional fact that I'm aware of that has happened since this report is that I'm informed that the Curtin Maritime has filed a lawsuit in federal court challenging the, involving an antitrust matter regarding the manner in which the contract was awarded to Avalon Freight Service.
This is in addition to what you were saying here about the litigation or the same thing?
It would be a separate litigation.
Another one?
Yeah. How long will the federal case take to be heard, probably?
Usually federal cases, if there's no appeal, take two to three years now in federal court because the criminal cases have priority. But, you know, we're seeing, you know, fast track for federal court is 18 months. And so, you know, most of the cases we're seeing are two to three years.
So we're talking about litigation or appeal that is holding us up from getting response to our letter?
Actually, it would now be both. It would be the appeal that Curtin took of the PUC as well as the lawsuit that Curtin filed in federal court. And what the Attorney General had told me is that as long as there is any, she used the word, any litigation pending, they do not issue opinions because they do not want to influence the PUC or the court. So they're waiting until all the litigation's done.
Okay. So the reason for this letter is I want to have this decision expedited by the Public Utilities Commission because I think this is of the utmost importance to our community. I have overwhelming support for competition in the freight line business for many reasons, and I think it's important that we write this letter just to see exactly what the Public Utilities Commission and how they're going to react to what our letter's about. I don't know if they're even understanding what our situation is here in Avalon. And so, that's why I'm looking for support from the council on this particular decision here to write a letter to the Public Utilities Commission. I don't think it would do any harm to anybody and this is about the people of Avalon and what's best for them. That's it.
The problem I have is it won't do any good. The PUC could come out with their decision tomorrow and it's not going to slow up the federal case and the Attorney General's not going to talk to us until all the stuff's gone. And I don't think we should necessarily waste our time sending a letter that doesn't do anything. Just wastepaper.
It's wastepaper, okay. Well, I don't think it is a waste of money or paper. It's just a matter of us directing our attorney, who already works for us, to write a letter. That's all it's going to cost. What we could get from it is that the process could be expedited and fast-tracked, especially if we put pressure on the Public Utilities Commission. I think they're supposed to be there for our disposal for these particular matters, especially matters of possible monopolies or the community itself. Since we are public servants, we're supposed to be standing up for our community. And like I said, I've had overwhelming support for competition in the freight line business. It's not about any particular company or any particular person. It's about the group, the people of Avalon that will benefit from this. What this is getting, the point this is getting to is we've written a letter to the Attorney General of California. She's the one that we want the response from. So, the Public Utilities Commission needs to understand that we demand a response from them so that we can get the more important response from the Attorney General and come to the conclusion that we need to, whether or not this is something that we, that would benefit the community. That's what we want to know. That's the question that the people are asking right now. And if we have to go to the Attorney General, that's what we're doing. That's why, that's why the curiosity is what the people are wondering right now. Why aren't we getting response to this? Why is it taking so long? Martin Curtin actually feels that it's important enough to file a lawsuit over. That's not here nor there for us. We wrote a letter as a public municipality to the Attorney General of California, who works for us and works for the people that elected us into these offices that we hold, and we're asking her for her recommendation. I think it should be fast-tracked. It's something that's important enough. I don't want to see this slip under the cracks here. Like I said, it's overwhelming support from the community. I haven't had one person that has told me, I don't want you to do this. This is not something that will benefit the community. If the federal government, after we write our letter to the Public Utilities Commission and then we have to go to the federal government again to ask them to expedite this particular process, it's important enough to us. I think we should do this. I can't see what it would hurt at all. What, it would cost us the time that it takes for you to write the letter and to send it, right?
For the PUC, yes. For the federal court, it may involve becoming, the judge usually doesn't listen to people unless they're parties to the case, and that would be a significant expense. But I could, I could research that to see if...
Are we a party?
No.
And we're not a party?
No, because we don't, no, no, because they haven't sued us.
Okay. Well, we're not there yet, so this is the first step.
Well, I guess, I had kind of requested that a call be made because it seems like if I call, it's not appropriate for me to call. And I, you know, yes, I can call as Danny Marshall, but I was, but not as mayor. And to see, I mean, not knowing these processes, I don't, I don't want to be a nuisance. However, I don't, I'm just not sure. That's why I was hoping a phone call would be made so we could, we could say, hey, does this hold weight? I mean, if it's, I think one of the discussions that you and I had, Joe, was, I don't know if Martin Curtin knew that, but at the time that he, you know, we said, here, we write a letter, and then he files a suit the next day, and that's what slowed, that's, that helped slow down the process, I think, in getting a response, in a way. So, I mean, it's...
Is that the case?
Yeah.
So you're saying that if Martin Curtin wouldn't file an appeal or litigation, then you think the Attorney General would have answered our question?
That the Attorney General told me that because of the impact of the motion for reconsideration by Curtin, that they would not consider a response to our letter. As long as there's any litigation pending and they consider that appeal litigation, they will not consider the city of Avalon's request. It's their policy.
Okay, so we can still write the Public Utilities Commission and ask them to expedite the process. That's one step forward in the right direction for the people of Avalon, which is what we're standing up for right now. That's exactly what this is all about. Like I said, I've had complete and overwhelming support for this item. Not one person has ever come up to me in the last year and said, I don't want this. This is not conflicted in some way, shape, or form, or not financially beholden or benefiting from this process that's going on. I'm absolutely neutral on it.
I guess I'm just really curious. I mean, and that's why I wanted a phone call made to say, does it really matter? If we write another letter, is the CPUC really going to, oh yeah, the city's anxious, so we're going to hurry this up? I mean, I just, I guess I don't have any faith.
I don't want the taxpayers to have to wait and keep getting the timeout sign from these people. I mean, if you work for the taxpayers, they work for the state of California, their job is to prevent monopolies from overtaking public municipalities like this. So, we want to make sure that the people are protected right now. That's what this is all about.
Well, I think they are protected, but now if something's in federal court, now we're really talking about a lengthy period of time. And so...
So what do we just do? Let it be quiet and go humbly into our corners and let this just disappear into the cracks and crevices? Or do we push forward and we find an answer to this? I mean, we went to the highest law enforcement authority in California and we're asking for their directive on this. It's pretty simple. We asked them for a directive and they're saying, well, you got to wait now. What we're saying, well, we don't want to wait as long as you want to make us wait. And if we can expedite the process on behalf of the 4,000 people that live here, or, you know, then we'd like to do that. Because they're the ones that are making this call. That's who I'm representing. That's who I'm speaking for right now.
Well, Joe, I hate to disagree with you, but I haven't had those people flock to me saying they're in support of this letter. I haven't had people flock to me about much of anything recently. And I don't think we should be wasting our time on something that's kicking the ball down the court way down the way. And I would make a motion to table this.
And I would like us to just make a phone call.
Table till the next meeting. Make the phone call.
Because I'm really curious. Who can tell us if writing this letter is really, really helpful or not, or if we're just, I don't, I don't...
Who's going to make the phone call?
Well, I think the city manager should. Andrew Scott, either one.
Well, that's going to cost us money right there. Why don't we just write a letter? Simple.
I would just like to table, I agree, table. I would like a phone call to be made and I think it should probably go to, one of the, the phone call should go to Darwin Farrar because he seems to be the man who's been most neutral and understands the process. And...
And the good sensible decisions he comes up with gets tossed to the side and get overruled. So, where do we go?
I think he can tell us the reality. Well, I wouldn't be seconding the letter right today, I guess, if you make the motion. I don't believe I'll second it.
You want to second the table for the next meeting?
Yes, and see what kind of response we get back from whoever you, I mean, you're our legal counsel. I mean, if I think we should be contacting Farrar, but who would you think we should be contacting to find out process and if there is a way to expedite the process? If just a letter...
Who? Who are we talking about?
Well, you usually would talk to the CUP's general counsel because they're the ones that are, because now it's, now it's, you know...
The general counsel is who? The same people that made the decision to have a monopoly?
No. No, it's, the CPUC has an attorney, much like the city council has an attorney. I could call them. We would have to file, though, after that phone call, a notice of ex parte communication so that the parties know that we've had that communication. But we can, we can do that. That would be, that would be the person that I would, that I would suggest. If not, you know, Commissioner, I mean, sorry, the special advisor Farrar made a recommendation to the panel and then the panel, you know, took that recommendation and made its own separate decision.
So the first step is to communicate with the panel and then the second step is to become an ex parte of the process?
No, we, any contact, any contact that we have with the PUC, we have to inform the other parties that we've had in contact about this matter with the PUC. It's just required.
Just like when I called, I had to do that.
Does that mean a lot of the correspondence that's going on within the lawsuit is going to be given to us then?
We already...
Yeah. All the correspondence or filings in the lawsuit are, in the future, will be mailed to you. They're also available on the website of the PUC.
Okay, well, then you're talking about a whole heck of a lot more correspondence, a whole lot more money, a whole lot of more pieces of paper being wasted. And we're just writing a letter to say, hey, we want to expedite the process. That's it. What you guys are doing, you're complicating the whole thing. If you want to do that, that's fine. I mean, but, so, let's do it. I mean, you want to go for it, let's go for it. But I am not dropping this for anything. As long as I'm on this council, I'm going to keep pushing forward on this because I think it's an important enough matter to where the people want some resolve to this. And it's going to, it's going to happen one way or another, that we're going to get some resolve from the Attorney General or we're going to get some kind of result or decision for her as to, a directive on where we should go with this and what she thinks and what she thinks is fair for the people here. And that's what we're talking about. So if you guys want to complicate the issue, then go ahead and write the phone call and then become a communicative participant within the process, that's fine with me. Let's do it. Either way, people win.
That's direction. We'll make the phone call and then advise what the, what that contents of the phone call was.
Okay.
Because it's, okay. Yeah, exactly. Let's see if that works to begin with, and if not, we're ahead.
Because when they hear that they're going to, when they hear that they're going to, they're also going to know that's what we're wanting. When he's asking this question, they're going to know that's what we're wanting.
Okay.
If at all possible.
Okay, let's start there then.
Okay, thank you. Okay, item number seven.
Wait, we need to get...
Oh, I'm sorry. Council members?
Don't get them.
Council members, we're back.
I'm going to put down that letter.
That horseback.
Both letters.
I think it was the fire truck.
Yeah, the fire.
It was, but it just went up and down.
Okay. You getting ready, Ben?
Uh, yes.
Okay. We're just missing one, council member. Item number seven.
Okay, this item was brought to the city at the end of last week. The event people came in and talked to David and Ben was there and I really don't know much about it other than the city's involved because it would be in violation of our noise ordinance and that's what, why it's here. So, we're going to learn about the event and what they're actually, why they'd be asking you to waive the noise ordinance.
And then if there's council interest on this, that we would bring this back because we're waiving the noise ordinance requirements, you have to mitigate a negative dec, which is just a minor sequel thing to go through the process because your noise is one of the things that you have to, quote, "study the environmental impacts" on.
Okay.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Ben Villalobos. I'm director of food and beverage for the island company. First of all, you know, I know as much as Dave about this, so I kind of have an overview. We were approached by the CEO of HPTV, which is a 24-hour music television network, and they were looking at locations to launch a 24-hour party, basically, which would be DJ-driven. And it would be, they have this virtual reality technology, which it would be launching to the world. The partners are Verizon Wireless, Apple as well. And so, it would be the most viewed pay-per-view in the Guinness Book of Records. That's what they're claiming. So, the reason that we came to you today is to see about a noise ordinance. The date's important because it's Halloween, so the end of October, so October 29th. And the, it would be at Descanso Beach Club. For those of you that were at the Anheuser-Busch event, it would basically mirror that. We would use the same production company, PRG, that I think everyone was so happy with, that did a great job for that Anheuser-Busch event. And in essence, they're looking to bring over 150 VIP executives and the, you know, all A-list... know, all A-list kind of celebrities, and also between 1,200 and 1,500 tickets would go on sale to a handpicked participants that would come over for that 24-hour event. In addition to that, when we initially spoke before we met with David, I suggested it'd be a good idea that they would be able to involve the city or community. So, they have agreed to give a sizable donation. We talked about the Anheuser-Busch donation of $500,000 for the, for the field. So, they would like to do something similar. They haven't confirmed on the amount, but that's something that we're talking with them, with David and myself about, and also trying to do something for the people of Avalon. So, again, we're looking at different ways, either giving, you know, a certain amount of tickets so we can raffle them for people to actually go to the event and enjoy it, or even do something on Front Street, so free entertainment, but with, you know, a high-quality A-list performer as a way of saying thank you as well. So, the only kind of issue from noise, the noise side, I think, is with the harbor and if there's any boats in that, in front of Descanso. But the time of year, it's, there's normally little or no boats there, and there's space on the moorings in Avalon Harbor. So, that's kind of an overview of what, what it's about. Again, it's really initial talks at the moment, so I don't really have a huge amount of specific details. But all of the entertainment would be approved by, you know, myself, so it wouldn't be something that would be, wouldn't fall into what we're looking for. Diplo, who performed at Anheuser-Busch, he's one of the artists that would be performing. And then the only other one is Calvin Harris, which is another similar to Diplo. I'm not really that trendy, so I'm not sure about all of the other names, but, so that's basically it in a nutshell.
And DJ Ayalo or what is it? Rollalo? Yeah, our own local DJ. He's Raúl Lo, it's great. Yeah. What's, what did we do for the Bud Light program as far as mitigating the, the noise ordinance?
Well, we had an agreement with them that set forth a certain, certain, actually, there it was, we agreed to not enforce the noise ordinance up to a certain time, and we had an agreement with them. And then we also, at the same time, we did do the environmental approval, the date that you approved the agreement. So, again, we, we can do this, it's just a matter of, do you want to have this event in the, in the city? If you do, we'll get it done.
We already did something like this, and it was, it was awesome. It was great. And I, what I've seen is, what they're offering here is like, I don't see how we can say no to this. I mean, it's, the people have benefited, they're, they're being gracious to us. Most of the, most of the noise is gonna, the music's gonna be out at Descanso Beach, except for what they provide to the community, which is really cool, because last time, the community benefited from the entertainment. They were really cool with it. It's around Halloween, there's gonna be a lot of noise and stuff going on anyways. As long as people aren't, you know what? As long as we can deal with people getting intoxicated, which our law enforcement is on, all over that, as long as people aren't being angry, pissed off, and destroying things, and getting naked, puking up all over the place, I think we're...
Most of this event, pretty much the entire event, will be on Island Company property, so that will be an issue. But the, the event that would be on Front Street, they wouldn't be drinking on Front, they would be drinking on Front Street. It would be...
I understand that, but when people are out there partying, they come back into town, so if we have, you know...
The idea, the idea of it is to actually have, make it a 24-hour party, and it's all being held strictly at the Island Company party, so they wouldn't funnel back in except, you know...
They have to go from Avalon to get to the boat.
Yeah, I get, I get that. So, we can put, you know, make sure that we have the people following that. But I think one of the cool parts about this whole thing, it's a virtual reality party. So, that means anybody from around the world will be able to be involved, almost like be transported to this party. The EDM scene, which is the electric dance music scene, is huge around the world, in Japan, in China, in Europe. It's just catching on here in the States. You guys got a taste of it at the Budweiser event that was held here. And the idea is that these people at home can actually have like their Oculus 3D on, they can do it from their phone if they have a 3D aspect, or just from their TV, and be able to click into any camera that's around and be jumped right into that spot where they might be hanging out with an A-lister over here, and then jump into the casino and be drinking, you know, with an A-lister there. The whole idea is to have a, a party going on worldwide where people are in their own homes, but coming to Catalina. And they like the idea of running a, doing, during the day, doing a concert right there in Catalina, so when, when the cameras are there and people from around the world jump in, jump into this concert, that's happening 24 hours on this pay-per-view event, so people can jump in, jump out. And so, when they get there, they can actually be on Front Street and see Catalina from around the world in a virtual environment, which to me is a pretty cool, which is a pretty cool idea.
So, they really wouldn't even be getting a hotel room? They would just be coming in for 24 hours and then leaving?
No, I think some people would. So, again, we don't have the full details, but I'd imagine that the, a lot of people would because, you know, 24 hours is a long, a long time. So, people would be going in and out, so they would be going in and out, and...
It's huge production, too. I mean, you need stages, sound, lights, audio, visual, cameras, crews, trucks, equipment, water, possibly, things like that. It's just, it's a huge production. So, that's why I'm just, I'm just trying to fire up the conversation so we can brainstorm this a little bit and see what we're voting on.
So, the, the, it would be the same, like PRG would be the company, so it'd be the same stage that they did for the Anheuser-Busch, which was half a million dollar rental that they paid for that. So, you know, they, they know that, that they have a lot of sponsors that are putting a significant amount of money, as you'd imagine. So, they know about the costs, and we looked at the contracts that we had, you know, previously done. So, you know, this is, they're gonna be spending a lot of money on the production side of it, and they're looking at Vegas as well, but just as a unique location. And they came here because of the whole Anheuser-Busch and then Catalina Wine Mixer, and it's kind of just created this buzz that we can do events as an island, and it's such a unique location. And so, you know, I think it's, it's gonna be great advertising, which I don't think we could even put a dollar amount on for, for the whole, the whole island, and I think all, all of the businesses are gonna be happy with it, so.
Also, like, like you said, you know, with AOL, Verizon, Apple involved in this, they're the ones that are kind of upfronting this. The whole idea of this is actually, it's a launch party for the virtual reality kind of TV that's going on with, within this industry. They're gonna launch this, and they want to launch it from here. They prefer here over Vegas because everything, everybody's been to Vegas and done Vegas.
What's your sentiment, Solly?
And so, you know, that's why they want to launch it out of, they want to launch it out of here. You know, just like, you know, they said they want to give some sort of donation to us, they can't be really put a dollar amount on it. They would like to make it significant. It all is based off the pay-per-view buys. Guinness Book of World Records involved in this because they believe it could be the largest pay-per-view event of all time. And so, but again, this is still in the early stages. It's not guaranteed. The reason they're asking for this is because if they can't do it here, they gotta go somewhere else, but they have to start preparing now. So, they just want to know, is, is it something that is possible to do here to extend that ordinance? Because that's all they're really asking for right now is to extend the ordinance, so they can, so they can throw that party there and launch their event.
Yes.
Me first? The only concern I have is, on both pieces of correspondence, he has the www.houseparty, housepartytellevision.com, which is a site under construction.
Yes.
Yeah, it's not.
They're, they're new, the guiding, what was it? Guiding Point? Right? Guiding Point is the technology company. This is a company, the TV, the TV site, everything is launching off of this event. The virtual reality machine, all this is launching. Like we said, this is, it may not happen. Yeah, we're, we're still in the early stages, but they just need to know it can, you know, that it can happen here.
Well, I'm kind of game for everything, so I, I guess my big concern, and it'll come down, it'll be law enforcement and all the requirements for that, especially since it's 24 hours, but I know you've covered it well with Up For Whatever very well, so...
I spoke with the, the captain as well, so he's in, in the loop, so, you know, usual concerns that Captain Federal has with any, any large event. So, we're still working on the details, but all of this burden would be in terms of financial burden on extra deputies, and that sort of thing would be on the organizers, so...
It seems like, sorry, it seems like this item is obviously gonna come back to us with a formal agreement and just like we did for Up For Whatever. So, what I hear is you're asking is, is it, you can't move forward until you know if it's even feasible for us to grant the objection to the, to the ordinance. So, what's before us is, would we as a council agree to allow a 24-hour event? And I think with the Up For Whatever, unless I'm mistaken, I, I left the event from Descanso early, and I couldn't hear, I couldn't hear the music in town. You couldn't hear it once you came around the corner. As far as boats, I think there was more boats in Descanso Harbor than I'd seen in a long time during that event, but I'm sure that we could move any, anybody who owned a mooring in Descanso, we could move them into Avalon Harbor if they didn't, if, if it was something that they didn't want to participate in, or... And it sounds to me like regardless of whether 1,500 participants get a hotel room, there's an opportunity for many businesses, because it takes about a week to two weeks to even set up something like this. So, there's also an opportunity for restaurateurs and hoteliers to receive a little bit of business for the setup and the cleanup as well. So, I'd certainly be, I'd be for it.
I think it would be great to see the harbor full at, you know, the end of October, because there will be, a lot of people that'll come over that are not obviously participating, but they're gonna be getting a mooring because they're gonna have a free concert, which is great.
So, if there's, so the appropriate motion would be to have staff move forward with the planning of this event, and we've come back to you with the formal, with the planning of an event to allow a 24-hour party with the requisite waiving of the municipal code noise ordinance time.
But I do ask for one thing, because I was very disappointed Up For Whatever was 21 to 35, and I'm almost double that in some of that area, so don't make me feel so doggone old when this event comes to town, even though I don't know anything about virtual reality.
I would definitely, I think it's a two-thumbs-up event, so I'd definitely move forward with the motion, the note, motion that Scott just represented, and that we research and direct staff into researching what we need to do to mitigate the sound ordinance, make sure all emergency services are involved in this, and it comes back to us, and we have a more defined and clear view about how this is gonna affect the town. And I know it will affect it positively and will have resounding effects, just like the other events that we've had like this. We just want to make sure it fits into our community well and, and we mitigate the things that could possibly go wrong.
And the largest pay-per-view ever was 4.4 million people, the Pacheco fight.
Oh, wow, so we're gonna be more than that.
Okay, so that's my motion, my motion.
Did it need a motion?
Did it need a motion, or we just gave direction?
Just direction.
Direction, okay.
I think, I think we have direction.
Let me speak.
Proceed.
Okay, thank you.
By the way, are you having the Catalina Wine Mixer again this year?
Uh, yes.
What's the date on that?
It's gonna be the weekend of the 23rd of September.
Okay, thank you. Catalina Wine Mixer. Then, good luck.
Definitely.
Uh-huh. Anything else? If not, we're going into closed session. I'll probably say goodnight to Tony. Not that we'll be here this long, but anyway, thank you.
Closed session. We have two real property negotiators, the Casino Doc Cafe and the Yacht Club. We have two anticipated litigation, one involving a discussion on the status of the Edison MOU, the other involving a claim by Sandy Pines. Lastly, we have, actually, we have another one, too, another real property for the East Whitley. I will note that on the Edison matter, that the city manager would be recusing herself because her husband works for Edison.
Okay. And let me ask, because I think the East Whitley property was down low on the pole, can we move that up?
Yes.
Okay, so the, okay.
And there was no reportable action.
Okay, meeting adjourned.
Good night, Tony.
Thank you, Jordan. Thank you, Denise. Thank you, Scott.